Okay, it's seven o'clock and I'm calling to order San Lando City Council meeting. Today is Monday, October 13th. At this point in time, I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you're able to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam, today will be the day that's liberty and justice for all. Today, every single day is our commitment of liberty and justice for all. That's our pledge. Okay, so at this point in time, would Madam Clerk, you please take role?
Councilmember Aguilar. I don't think we caught that on the mic. Councilmember Aguilar.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Azavado, if you are present on Zoom, please let us know. Councilmember Bolt.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Simon.
Present.
Councilmember Viveros Walton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bowen.
Present.
And Mayor Gonzalez.
Present.
Thank you. A quorum is present.
Okay, just to confirm my notes, Azavado has not yet joined? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. The City of San Lando conducts orderly meetings to fulfill its mandate discriminatory statements or conduct that would potentially violate the Federal Civil Rights Act of 1964 and/or the California Fair Employment and Housing Act, California Penal Code Sections 4 or 3 or 415, are per se disruptive to a meeting and will not be tolerated. Please see the City Council Handbook and City Council Meeting Rules of Decorum for more information. Madam Clerk, if you would please make your announcement.
If you would like to make a public comment during the meeting, you can do so in person or via Zoom. If you are present at the meeting, please complete a speaker card and submit it to the city clerk before the item is presented. If you wish to participate in public comment via Zoom, you can use the Raise Your Hand tool when the item is called. During the public comment session, speakers will be invited to speak and will have a set time to share their comments. A countdown timer will appear for their convenience, and when the time is up, the microphone will be muted. All raised hands outside of public comment will be lowered to avoid confusion. Once public comment is opened, hands may be raised to speak.
Thank you for your announcement. At this point in time, we'll go to closed session. I know we had two hours of thorough and extensive conversation, but was there any reportable action taken?
Thank you, Mayor. A reportable action was taken, but is not to be reported this in time to an unprecedented city and potential litigation. Thank you.
Okay, item number four, presentation. And I believe we've got Director Liao to lead us off with 4A.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Getting used to this. I am here to present for the first time the draft rent stabilization ordinance for the entire council. Again, this is what we call probably version two. Would also here to provide some background on what's happened this summer in terms of the public outreach, since the ordinance was put out for public comment tonight. In addition, we'll also give you a preview of some preliminary cost options if this ordinance were eventually adopted, of what those options might be. We have three specific council direction questions that we're asking for guidance on, and then we'll end with next steps. But I mean, I'm also going to begin right now with some background and how we got here. As you know, we've been working on housing protections through the council prioritization process since 2023. But earlier this year, council made the exploration of a residential rent stabilization ordinance a priority for staff to pursue. And so in working with the rules committee the last couple of months, a draft ordinance was initially, a preliminary draft ordinance was put out for 60 days from July 17th to September 17th, and public outreach, community meetings, and stakeholder meetings took place. Here's again a slide that you all have seen, the number of potentially eligible rental units that would fall under any rent stabilization ordinance if it were to be adopted. So over 7,600 units. So let me begin tonight, too, with the public outreach process that was taking place initiated at the rules committee of July 17th. One of the big focuses this year, we've done our typical kind of email distributions. We've had a lot of stakeholders that have been put into the email on both sides of the coin. And so since the last couple of years, organizations, individuals, tenants, and landlords posting in typical places. But a couple of areas of focus was reaching out to our growing Spanish-speaking and Chinese-speaking populations. So we had everything translated, of course, into both languages in terms of the notifications. We had a very good suggestion from the rules to think beyond where we normally post. So we had our ED staff go out into areas, such as commercial areas, that were heavily either Chinese-speaking or Spanish-speaking, in terms of retail and commercial, and even some centers of social services. Some of our key events that we held were two community-wide meetings open to everybody in the public, and one was online and one was in person in late August and in early September. We also had, as we mentioned some before, stakeholder meetings that were targeted to housing providers and tenants, again, for people understandably that wanted to be in kind of a more private situation and wanted to be in a safer environment to make comment. And again, at each of those meetings, we had Cantonese and Spanish interpreters. And we also received written comments that you all summarized over the 60-day period. I wanted to highlight some of the comments. You know, in your packet, we have much more kind of, almost close to verbatim things that were submitted in terms of comments, but we wanted to summarize key themes that we saw either from the tenant side or the housing provider's side of the commentary. So in terms of the housing providers, some of the common themes that came out of the public comments over the public outreach period or the public comment period, so it was the ordinance seems to be being moved in too quickly, being implemented too quickly. There are already existing state and city tenant protection laws. It seems that providers may feel like they're paying for duplicative burdens, some confusing city program. Property owners also have rising costs, such as insurance and taxes. There was some questions about, so where does this put the rent review ordinance as opposed to the proposed rent stabilization ordinance? And then some housing providers came out and noted again that they were still impacted negatively as a result of the COVID-19 eviction moratorium protections, and their units are still falling below market in terms of their returns. In terms of the tenant comments, some of the key highlights were, again, this was a preliminary, we took a preliminary stab at some of these thresholds, so we knew that they would generate public comment, but renters felt like the 5% cap was too high. In terms of the rent cap adjustments, they felt that either lower the cap or add a percent consumer price index to that threshold. There was a potential fear of increased homelessness due to displacement and affordable rent increases. There was a commentary that was a theme of vulnerable populations being impacted without stronger measures, low-income tenants, seniors, and persons with disabilities, capital pass-throughs. Several people felt that they should just go through a fair return process and not have a separate capital improvement pass-through process. And again, back to the issue of vulnerable populations, whether there should be more exemptions for seniors and persons with disabilities or special needs. So now I'm going to begin, for several of you who are on the rules, this is probably the first time you've had this presentation. Staff did make some minor adjustments based on the helpful feedback we received from the public the last couple of months, and also some of the comments that we received from rules in July. We added a purpose section, so one that both balances the key issue of preventing displacement of individual renters who are no longer able to afford rent due to excessive increases, but also ensuring that housing providers, landlords receive a constitutionally required fair return. In terms of the definitions, I won't read through every one, but we did have some good feedback about rent, and so we kind of switched out the word compensation with consideration, kind of elaborated a little bit more on that. Had a really good comment during the pub here, what is the base year? That was not defined. So we've defined the base year as this current calendar year, given that most likely progress would be made more in the year 2026. We'll get to the issue of capital improvement, but that's something that is a repair improvement that adds value and excludes maintenance and ongoing typical repairs. A hearing officer is a neutral individual appointed by the city manager to be the sort of oversight administrative hearing officer. They shall neither have to avoid conflict of interest, they should not own property or be a tenant here in the city. And the program administrator is, again, somebody appointed by the city manager to carry out the responsibilities of administering the program, and that would be typically staff. In terms of exemptions, we know the overriding state law that exempts things under this ordinance would be the Costa-Hawkins Act of 1995. So as you all know, single-family homes, also individually sold units like condos or townhomes are exempted, and also, most importantly, any kind of unit built after February of 1995. So that is one of the protections that the State of California has in place to ensure that new construction and new housing are not impacted by rent stabilization. One key thing is that these exemptions are explicitly included in the draft ordinance so that they will remain exemptions even if Costa-Hawkins is repealed. Additional common exemptions that we kind of summarized were, as we know, the mobile home, community has its own rent stabilization ordinance currently, accessory dwelling units, which is a priority of the state to be expanded upon, golden duplexes where owners own one of the units and rents out the other, short-term rentals, like Airbnb would be exempted, long-term affordable rental housing, such as the ones that the city subsidized over the decades, like Maria Alta and La Vereda would be exempted, they're already going through their own form of rent increase caps. Also, emergency transitional housing, such as our newly established dwelling interim housing and drop-in center, and of course, shared housing. So when people rent out a room, especially people who are fixed income homeowners, that would be exempt. So in terms, again, we set the initial rent cap, we looked at and got some direction about other cities, including Alameda, so it was capped at 5%, and we got a lot of commentary on that, as I mentioned. This ordinance would allow one increase per year. The capital pass-through would be capped at 5% of a tenant's current rent. For this draft, did not allow for banking of unused increases. Again, Costa-Hawkins allows for vacancy decontrols when landlords can reset the rent to market when a unit becomes vacant, and then rent increases are allowed only if the unit is registered by the landlord provider and the fees are paid. So there's some limits on what is in the rent. So housing providers can't unbundle or increase fees like utilities or parking mid lease, whether it's month-to-month or 12-month, but increases or unbundling can happen when lease renewals happen, and that should be included in rent cap calculations. And then charges for new housing services, such as parking or storage requested by tenants, and separately metered utilities are typically would be excluded from rent cap calculations. So there's three types of applications or petitions that would be allowed for a rent adjustment, and there are capital improvement pass-throughs, the fair return petition, and the decrease in housing services. The first two would be by housing providers, the third would be by the tenants. In terms of the capital improvement pass-throughs, so landlords can request to pass costs for major upgrades, they must be filed within six months of them finishing their work. The minimum cost would be about $10,000. Again, that would emphasize more substantive work being done. All pass-throughs authorized would terminate when any rental unit becomes vacant. And again, this is a model at the time that we used just as a starting point from the City of Alameda with guidance from the rules, just again, as a starting point. There's a tiered kind of pass-through for smaller units, it's a higher level of pass-through, and then past 25 units, they would go through a fair return process. And we do have a question for you on that on the policy side. In terms of calculating the pass-through, they must be amortized over the useful life based on the IRS schedule. The rules mentioned that we had an or 10 years. They said, suggest we pick one, so we did. Reimbursements such as insurance must be deducted before you calculate the pass-through. And then if work is submitted before the work is done, that amount cannot be increased later, and landlords must show actual costs, match, or exceed estimates. If there's delays or failure to maintain property, they should be excluded. And mixed-use or partially exempt properties, again, we would look at that in a pro rata fashion in terms of calculating what the residential portion would be. And then this is a key concept, I know, and I expect we would have some questions. What is a fair and reasonable return? And this is a core issue in all rent stabilization ordinances. So here, we reiterate that property owners are entitled to a rent increase if necessary to achieve a fair return, presuming that an owner is receiving a fair return if their net operating income adjusted for inflation is same amount or greater than what they received in the year before the rent and stabilization ordinance was enacted. In terms of the fair return petition, the landlords can request rent increases and not earning a fair return. They would base it on their NOI compared to the base year, but they would also need to provide financial documentation with their petition. A decrease in housing services is a tenant-driven application or petition. A decrease in housing services is the tenant-driven application or petition. Tenants, if they feel, a number of them feel that they are experiencing a decline in their services in their complex, they can request a rent reduction, and the result, if in their favor, the rent may be lower to reflect that lost value. In terms of the overall process for these three petitions, I'm going to go through a few of these, and I'm not going to go through every one, but I'll highlight key ones. Again, a landlord/tenant would file with the program administrator, which is city staff. The city will come up with a form for the public, as we have in our programs. There will be a fee set by council, and I guess we'll get to some of the cost discussions later today and probably in a couple of months. There is noticing requirements by the landlord and the tenant, and then there's a completeness check by the program administrator. Notifications are key, so written notice is sent to all affected parties. The ordinance provides the content of those petitions, and the responses are shared with the petitioner. Hearing dates would happen within 90 days of a petition being accepted for capital improvement pass-throughs. If the majority of tenants consent to it in writing, then no hearing is required. For 10 units or less subject to a pass-through, no hearing is required if at least 2/3 of the tenants live in their consent in writing. Now, the program administrator has the option to attempt mediation. It can require parties to attend at least some kind of session for mediation. In terms of hearing details, there'll be notices sent out at least 15 days in advance of a hearing, and then hearings can be continued by the officer. Parties involved would present data and testimony at those hearings. The hearing can proceed even if one party does not attend, and then the hearing officer may consider failure to provide documents as part of their verdict. In terms of decision and outcome, applicant or petitioner has the burden of proof. These hearings will be recorded. Parties are not required to, but could seek assistance from attorneys or tenant reps. Decisions will be issued within 30 days of when the hearing ends, and then rent adjustments would take effect immediately unless stated by the hearing officer otherwise. There is an appeal process to the hearing officer's decision, and that would go to the courts by whoever is appealing, and those judicial filings must be also forwarded to the city program administrator. Other notable features of the ordinance, so the landlord needs to inform new tenants about the ordinance and also existing tenants whenever a rent increase occurs. One kind of unique feature that we've added was more explicit detail on buyout agreements. We know that happens regularly at times, so a key part of this provision is just to make sure there's transparency on all sides. So tenants must receive those disclosures before signing, they have 30 days to cancel, and then any signed mutual agreement would be filed on record with the city. In terms of penalties and remedies, I think we've kind of modified the section so that we just reference our existing mini-code with citations and violations. And also, this ordinance would not override any state or federal laws. The program fee, that would be an annual fee related to this program paid by housing providers. There could be a late fee charge in this draft ordinance, up to 50% could be passed to the tenants in up to two installments, spread it out a little bit, and late payments by the provider could incur penalties. And lastly, there would be a city annual report by staff about program effectiveness. One topic that has come up, certainly during the public period as well as that rules, was the idea of means testing with rent stabilization. And that would be an ordinance that basically just benefits more vulnerable populations like the low-income or senior tenants. We, as staff, are not aware of any existing rent stabilization ordinance that has a means tested rent, means testing requirement. One of the analysis that's been done by our city attorney's office is this creates significant legal risk, because instead of regulating the rent increases on a market-wide basis, it regulates certain landlords based solely on the characteristics of individual tenants, which is maybe outside of the landlord's control. So a typical means-tested program, as most of you know, is usually a service or a financial program. So I wanted to just bring up that the Human Services Department will be, in the coming months, rolling out and presenting to council a rental assistance program through a state grant that we've received for extremely low-income tenants at or below 30% area income or tenants who are at risk of homelessness. So that is an example of a means-tested program and financial assistance that the city is going to be rolling out separately. So this is one area that we also began preparing with the help of a consultant firm, Baker Tilly, that has done a lot of analysis for other cities doing rent stabilization. These are some preliminary costs, and again, I think we emphasized that we're preliminary, we would like to come back and explore this more with you in your future work session. But we had some comparative cities that were done, Alameda, Oakland, Berkeley, Mountain View, Concord. We have two options that we're going to show you a little bit more detail in a second. But one of the indicators that Baker Tilly has used is a ratio of units per full-time employee. That's a standard that is able to use to compare cities of different sizes and rent stabilization unit eligibility and staffing. And so that's one area that's a criteria we can talk a little bit more about, but wanted to show you this slide first, and then I'm going to go into the specifics of the two options. Option one is called the benchmark, the baseline services option. So this is one to run an effective program. And so this would be proposing, adding in the rent registry program, ordinance that was already adopted and approved with the budget last year or earlier this year. It would be total for staff. You subtract out the existing full-time staff that's already been approved for rent registry. So for rent stabilization, this option would propose an increase of two full-time staff. The proposed budget would be about 1.4 million total for rent registry plus rent stabilization, but if you subtract out what's in the two-year budget, about $650,000 for rent registry currently, the cost to create the rent stabilization program would be about $740,000 for this first year. So this gives us what we call a baseline satisfactory service delivery model. We can get effective service to the community with effective and responsive times to follow up on inquiries by the landlords and the tenants. You can do some proactive enforcement efforts, and kind of what we mentioned with the units to employ a ratio, you have a manageable staff workload to accomplish that effective service. Option two is a little bit more of an enhanced, or you could say a Cadillac version. So here, it would be adding three additional staff beyond what's been approved for rent registry, adding three staff for rent stabilization. The total cost has increased up to 1.6, this is a higher service level. Subtracting out what's been approved in the budget for fiscal year '27, it's closer to about over $950,000 that the city would need to sort of approve in order to get this off the ground. This would allow for what we call an excellent level of service. It's 125% higher in staffing and operating budget than option one. It is what you define as a very well-resourced program with a very manageable staff workload to allow for more effective and efficient service delivery and more active proactive So typical line items that fall into a budget in rent stabilization would be, obviously, a key one here would be personnel cost for staff, consulting is always, and professional services with help, administration reporting on this program is always helpful, too. The hearing officers on the legal side, and ongoing enforcement by our city attorney's office. Outreach translation and education is very critical for the success of this, and we're learning this with rent registry right now. And then indirect costs include insurance and info technology. One thing I did want to note, too, going back with the cities we compared to, those that have rent stabilization also have a rent registry that paired with that. There are challenges, we know, to take on these programs. There's unknowns going in. So we know similar to rent registry, it will probably take about three to five years to get substantive, you know, at least 85% cost recovery or full compliance. Once full staffing is in place, it's important. Public outreach and public education is critical, and that does take some time. This could put some burden on existing staff while we're staffing up. We are finding with rent registry, too, integrating the software with existing city software with business licenses and such is also something that we have to kind of coordinate ahead of time. And of course, we know right now that the city is going through a structural deficit and facing some current and immediate future challenges fiscally. So in terms of direction, we have three questions to follow up with. One, the first question we ask is, should the rent cap threshold remain at 5%? And should a consumer price index threshold be added? So we wanted to show you some pros and cons here. So the pros of keeping a 5% rent cap, you know, lowering the rent cap below 5% could further cost burden existing housing providers. Keeping a straight rent cap percent is pretty straightforward and simple to administer. Some of the cons of 5%, as we've heard from the public commentary, from tenants...